Commission study session. We'll start with public comments. Do we have any today?
No, not registered.
Thank you. We'll move on to items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda, which consists of our minutes from the June 20th study session and the June 27th study session. Commissioners, are we okay with moving that on to our regular agenda? That's good. It's what we'll do. Thank you. I moved us on to items for presentation and discussion. First will be a proclamation recognizing July 15th, 2022 as Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. It will be presented to Levi Meyer from the O R C, and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Ottawa, and whereas parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region. And whereas parks and recreation professionals daily maintain our pools, beaches, campsites, arenas, picnic areas, athletic fields, skate parks, dog parks, festival venues, gardens, visitor centers, historic and cultural tracks, recreational facilities and amenities, normally as unsung services. And whereas Kansas local parks generate over $1 billion in economic activity annually with the service of parks and recreation professionals. And whereas there are over 8,000 programmers, managers, maintainers, landscapers, facilitators, lifeguards, coaches, event organizers, and caretakers who plan, provide, operate, and enhance the experience of our parks, recreation programs, and facilities in the state of Kansas. And whereas the city of Ottawa recognizes the benefits derived from the service of parks and recreation professionals, therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Ottawa, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July 15th, 2022 to be recognized as Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. And the city of Ottawa, Kansas, sign this 11th day of July, 2022 by me. Here you go. Are we gonna get any pictures typically?
Yeah.
Picture.
So, congratulations.
Strike day.
I know, it's like strike the day. Way to go.
Say a few words, you can.
I, yeah, that's all right. Yeah. First of all, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for recognizing the Parks and Recreation Professionals here in our community. As you all know, the city of Ottawa Parks Department and the Ottawa Recreation Commission are not organizations under the same roof, but we work together to provide quality-of-life services to the members of this community. City Parks Superintendent D J Welsh and his seven full-time staff do an incredible job at maintaining our local parks and green spaces. They are responsible for maintaining over 100 acres of green space, 19 playgrounds, disc golf courses, and 17 other park facilities. The Ottawa Recreation Commission has seven full-time staff who oversee the administration of recreation programs and facilities. Our facilities staff maintains the Orloshcocks Sports Complex, which is home to 11 baseball softball fields, the two Forest Park Sports Fields, the Lincoln Soccer Fields, and the Gopperick Community Recreation Center. Our programming staff provide youth and adult sports, fitness classes, and a variety of community engagement events, and also help manage the city pool. Everything mentioned above would not be possible without the help of our volunteers, part-time staff, and community partners. The O R C alone employs over 200 part-time and seasonal workers each year, ranging from grounds crew to umpires and lifeguards. Every season, our volunteers devote their time to coaching our youth sports, playing a major role in the development of our community youth. Thank you for recognizing not only the local professionals, but all of the individuals who support parks and recreation in this community, including yourselves.
Thank you, Levi. We appreciate you and your staff and what you guys do for the youth of the city of Ottawa. You make sports enjoyable for them, for sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is this your first year for this day? Or is this something that's been in the past? I don't recall this.
Since my time is with the O R C, we had it last year. We didn't get it recognized with the city, so this is our first year having the proclamation.
I know you're getting busy for the summer season, but is there ever a downtime with O R C? Is there something going on every?
Not really. No, no, we're planning after-school program in all of our fall sports. So, flag football and soccer are upcoming, and we've launched registration. There's no real downtime for us, which is good.
I agree. That's wonderful.
And they can certainly use some youth sports coaches.
Yes.
So, if you ever have any free time, Mr. Skidmore.
There's a championship caliber coach in this room, for matter of fact.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Levi. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate you.
Thank you for the shirts.
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And we saw on item two, which is a recommendation to award Kansas Highway 68 Service Preservation Project bid to Burlington Construction. I believe Jason Hoskinson is on Zoom, and Justin McCurdy is here, if we have any questions for him also. Good afternoon.
Good evening, Mayor, or good afternoon, I guess, Mayor and Commissioners. Used to doing these things in the evening. Hopefully, you guys can hear me okay.
We can.
Excellent. All right, well, we included some information in the, in your bid, or in your study session packets regarding the bid of K-68 surface preservation. I also included a memo. I'd be happy to share it if you guys don't have it. But I was gonna just real quick step through the history here and then describe the project and help answer any questions that you might have, so. This project was actually initiated a number of years ago. We worked on getting some grant dollars, worked with Mike A. Flay to get some grant dollars from KDOT to make some repairs to the concrete pavement on K-68, basically from the Meritiseen River Bridge going north and east through the Main Street intersection and through the S-curve to Poplar Street. That area has, the cracks are, the joints are cracking and spalling. There's a number of panels that are broken and need to be replaced. In 2020, we were successful in landing a grant. It was a $300,000 grant. KDOT matches 90, 90 cents on the dollar. So, it's a 90-10 split on the construction phase component of the project. Fast forward, we've since gone through design and recently had a successful bid opening of the project. We only received one bid. It was from Burlington Construction out of Burlington, Kansas. We have a recommendation letter in there. We've worked with Burlington in the past. We believe they're qualified to do this work. Their bid was a total of $275,070.28. So, 90% of that ballpark number would be covered by the KDOT grant as a reimbursement program. The city will administer the project from here forward, assuming you want to move forward with the work. You'll administer the project, pay the contractor, and then once the project is complete, you can request reimbursement from KDOT for that, for that cost. So, with that said, I might, that's a real quick snapshot. I'll turn it back to you guys, or Justin, if you want to add anything as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, this will still include, I mean, the elevated median that will remain, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
There'll be some patchwork on the curbs and pavement around it, but it will still be an elevated median.
Okay.
Justin, you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't. We're excited to get this project going. It's been working on it for a while. See it be completed. And start date, do we think it's around between now and October?
I don't know what start date was. It was this fall.
It's sometime October.
Yeah, we, we, we actually opened it up a little bit just because of contractor availability. Right now, we're finding it's hard to get contractors to bid on work and construct the work. Yeah, the start date would be somewhere between October of this year and potentially even March of next year. So, we went ahead and extended it in the next year. KDOT's good with all of that. They've issued authority to the city to go ahead and award the contract. But the hope would be we'd have this buttoned up and done before this time next year.
And as it states, there's 30 working days that they have to finish the project once they start.
That's correct.
Was there a engineer's estimate? Do we have, did I miss a?
There was. We did include, I can't remember if I had the, yeah, we had the detail. We have the bid tabs included with our recommendation letter. So, our engineer's estimate, $331,400. The Burlington's price is below that. Competitive price, given the market that we're in right now. And one of the things we have been kind of emailing and talking about amongst staff is, if it's comfortable, not only authorizing award of the construction contract, but also giving staff some change order authority in the, say, the amount of maybe $20,000. This kind of work, when we get into patchwork, they may cut a patch out and then have to go another two foot to get to a better joint or, you know, remove some additional crumbling pavement. And that gives staff the authority to expand or reduce the project a little bit if we need to. Still all within the budget. And it also allows you to maybe get a little extra patching done under the KDOT grant eligibility, maximize your grant dollars coming back to Ottawa.
Can I ask you, are there any other questions for either Jason or Justin?
I don't think there's any reason for us to review it again. I mean, it is what it is. We should just move it on.
I think if there were multiple bids, I could certainly look at it being one and 60K under the engineer's estimate. I think it looks pretty good.
I agree. It needs to be done, too. I'm looking forward to getting it smoothly right.
Okay, we'll move that on to our, sorry, 20th agenda. Okay, so we'll do. We'll move it on to our July 20th agenda. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Justin.
Thanks. Appreciate your time.
All right, that moves us on to item three, which is a continued view of the 2023 operating budget, the revenue neutral rate, and a mill rate recommendation by our Director of Finance, Melanie Landis. Our city manager. Good afternoon.
Hi there. I get the clue. It's the special time. All right, so I wanted to start by explaining what was in your packet. There's a memo, which I know got kind of long, but really, a lot of it is information that you already know as a commission, but it was in there mostly for, as a reminder of the process, a reminder of the new process that we're under for revenue neutral rate, and then also for the public. So, they understand what we're getting into here. And in that packet, there is a copy of our valuation sheet. If you were curious as to what information we get from the county when that does come into us, and it has not only this year's valuation and the breakdown of that, but also last year's, last year's mill levy, or the final levy after the final valuation was given in October, as well as delinquency percentages, neighborhood revitalization numbers. So, that is included in there. And then along with that, there's a summary sheet for each of the property tax funds and a change sheet, or a recommendation and change sheet, I guess, for each of the items that you've already heard for the general fund from your department heads. And I felt like that was important to put in there because you heard about these particular items that they were requesting. But the way that we've structured this budget is based on a recommendation that Richard and I have put together, along with talking to the department head. So, it's a recommendation from us, and we can have more discussion about that as we go, if you like. Do you have any?
No, that's fine.
Are you sure?
I promise.
Okay, okay, all right. Yes? Uh huh.
What happened?
Oh. Oh, it was not my technical difficulty, by the way.
I think you got it right.
Take it from there.
All right, so in the presentation, we started with, or these are the items that I wanted to review with you. In our process, we're at that point where we're at the final decision-making time when it comes to valuation and/or mill levy impact. Because by July 20th, we have to notify the county clerk of our intent as to whether we will meet or exceed that mill, the revenue neutral rate. So, we want to talk about the assessed valuation and show you the trends there, the revenue neutral rate process, and what our requirements are there, the mill rate history that we have for the city so far. And then we'd like for your direction on a couple of items where you'd like to publish the mill rate for the public hearing, the community service allocation, and then determine a public hearing date because we have a couple of options there. I know these numbers are a little bit small on the bottom, but I wanted to show you that in our valuation trend, where we are for this year. So, the 2022 valuation is up 10.67% over the '21 valuation. The dates, when we talk about valuation, it is a '22 valuation, but it supports the '23 budget. So, and that's important to us because that determines the value of a mill. And the value of one mill for next year will be $122,000, $122,047. And so, that's the value of one mill that helps us determine where exactly we will land on our mill rate overall that we are targeting for a final decision in our budget. This is a little chart to kind of show you the mill rates that we've had over time. And you can see that we have been on a fairly level or downward trend since 2016, landing at the end of 2020, or for the 2022 year, at 45.968 mills. To talk a little bit about revenue neutral rate. This is somewhat confusing if you're really trying to run the numbers. But essentially, what this means is the Sun Bill 13 last year basically gave us direction as to how to, that we should be trying to target a revenue neutral rate or at least notifying the public as to what that revenue neutral rate might look like for them. And that would be that it's the same dollars, it's a tax rate for this year that would generate the same property tax dollars as last year, which would essentially mean an actual level ad valorem or property tax for that resident. And so, this is the calculation to get there. Essentially, you take this year's ad valorem that you needed in order to accomplish that budget. You would divide it by this year's assessed valuation, which is the $122,000, and then also divide that by 1,000. You come up with 41.536. If you look at that mill rate history here, you can see that where we are right now, currently in 2022, is 45.968 mills. So, in order to meet that mill, or the revenue neutral rate, we would need to come down over four mills in order to meet that for 2023. And I believe I included that on our next summary sheet. The other items that are included in our consideration for this is we do need to have some sort of action on July 20th, which is your next regular meeting, as to whether or not we intend to meet or exceed the revenue neutral rate. I believe we talked to you last year about how it's important to go ahead and notify the public that you may exceed the revenue neutral rate, regardless of where you intend to have that mill rate come in at. Whether you're at this given rate or whether you're going to be at a rate higher, that mill rate that we submit to the county can change because the final valuation doesn't come in until October. So, that could actually drive it up or change, or drive it down, whichever. But we always want to make sure we're protected. So, at any rate, also, when you give that intent, it's a form that Franklin County has designed, and every county is a little bit different, but it is their way of us notifying them in writing that we intend to publish a mill rate of whatever that number might be. And as we learned last year, that is the maximum. Even though we haven't published for a public hearing yet, and we will soon, whatever we put on that form is what we're intending to publish at.
And we can do that on the day of July 20th. We shouldn't have to do it by get the study session before.
Right, that's right. So, July 20th is the actual deadline. And so, that gives us an opportunity to review today, also next Monday, and then have it on your regular meeting on the 20th. And so, that, whatever that published mill rate is, that will be your maximum. That will be what we put on the form, notifying the county clerk. The county clerk will then, and this is the first year for this, distribute notices to every person or every resident within Ottawa city limits. And they're going to do the same for every taxing entity in and around the city as well. And so, we, in order to establish a timeline for a public hearing, we have to give them adequate time to publish that notice, to mail that notice out. Then we will also publish a notice in the newspaper, just like we normally have, of our public hearing date.
Those notices that go out, they would go out to the landlords, I assume.
They'll go out to the property owners.
Who the property owner is, whoever they are, like, well, like, I don't know.
Yes, it'd be for the, yes, the property owner for the properties within the city limits, yes. And then we, and then we carry on with our normal budget process was, which is give them at least a 10-day notice by publishing in the newspaper, and then we'll hold a public hearing.
Do all the governing entities get collapsed in one letter, or is it separate letters?
I honestly, I'm not sure. Because you'll have some that reside, that live within one and not the other. And so, I'm not sure how the county will do that. I haven't actually asked that question.
And do we pay this year for our portion of the payment?
Not this year. I believe that goes into effect next year. Do you have questions on the process for revenue neutral rate? I think it's important to make sure that everyone understands that we've given enough information to the public about the process.
I think you're going to cover this, but that's the maximum we publish. We can always go lower later on. When do we decide later on if we want to lower that mill let?
We can decide that before the public hearing or at the public hearing.
Which would be in?
We're going to talk about that. We have two options for dates and times, and I wanted to run that by you. And I'll get to that shortly, if you don't mind. Would that be okay? Okay, so this is a portion of the state budget form. I didn't give you the full publication because not everything is set yet. But what I wanted you to be able to see is the comparison from '21 to '22 to '23, and where we're recommending that we live as far as a published mill rate at this point. And that would leave us with a level of the general fund, for the debt service fund, for the auditorium fund. And then the library fund actually has a decrease in their mill rate from '22 to '23. And I'll let Terry talk about that here shortly, if you wouldn't mind. But the published rate that we would be recommending, it would be the 45.446. And again, the reason for doing that would be to give you the ability to lower, but not exceed. So, if there are items that we cover in the future that you would like to actually increase these, we can do that as well. We just wanted to give you a starting place for a conversation. I wanted to just briefly cover each of the four property tax funds because I think that's important for you to understand where we land on each one of these funds. This is a busy summary, I know, but the information that we've talked about, that each of the department heads brought to you, they gave you an overview and an explanation of all the items that they felt necessary to continue our operations at its highest level for 2023. And included in there are a lot of items that are new items, replacement items, new projects, new positions, and/or changed types of positions or salaries. And out of all of that, the budget that we came up with, this is a summary of that. On the following two pages, we actually gave you a breakdown of our conversation about what those, our recommendations would be. And this is where your city manager and I have gone through and said, okay, underneath of the monies that are allowable, what can we do to be creative enough with the items that were given here to be able to get you as much as we can packed into one budget? And that's essentially where we started here. So, these are all items that you were presented with. I did make a couple of notes out here to the side on some of these, and on every item. But included in here are a lot of your replacement vehicles and equipment. There's some new position salary changes, some technology and hardware, and some transfers for future capital improvements in here. On this list are the items that we either changed from what you originally heard or have suggested that we defer to a future year or found an alternative for it. So, for example, maybe we're not recommending a new position, but we might be recommending that instead of it, transfer to a reserve fund for some building, a future building maintenance project, that we finance that instead as part of a bigger project, which would alleviate that pressure on your general fund and instead put it back into a debt service payment over time, grouping those together to find you some savings there or to get that project done faster than having to save up money over five years to get it done. So, also, within our original presentation, there were several items that were duplicate of 2022. And largely because, as we talked about before, the idea behind being able to get every vehicle and every piece of equipment in 2022 is really putting somewhat of a stress on our '22 budget because some of those items came in much higher than we originally predicted. But what we found is, as we went through, we projected our 2022 expenditures and revenues. We're anticipating we'll be able to hold those dollars aside so that they can, and we'll put those in the equipment reserve at the end of the year so they can still get those, which means we don't have to budget for them in 2023 because then in our minds, that's a duplicate request, using up that capacity that you could otherwise use for other items. So, I don't think that today we're necessarily asking you to tell us one way or the other if there's anything on here that you do or don't like. But we can also hear that from you if you would like to share your opinions on any of these items. And it might be that if in the end you give us direction to that eventually you want to lower, maybe you want to publish at this level for mill rate, but eventually you'd like to lower that mill rate of some sort, allow us to go back and be creative with deciding is there something else we can do in order to find those dollars within that budget. It might be something additional, like at least purchasing one more piece of equipment or deferring a piece of equipment, or doing something else within that budget. So, unless you want to have more discussion about the details right now. Mayor, Commissioner, would you want to have more detailed conversation about the general fund now? Or do you want to move on and then discuss at the end?
I think the important point to remember is we were a million dollars over, right? We were a million dollars over with request. So, everybody worked together. We came up with a way to get that million dollars over, under a million.
Yes, and I would also say that some of what we were able to do was, which I think is important, I'm sorry, come back here real quick, is within each one of the funds that are controlled by the city, we were able to work into these funds a reserve for future improvements. So, for example, in the debt service and the auditorium funds, those reserves will be used for future facility improvements and/or future debt payments for city-related projects. And in the general fund, working in a reserve fund balance because the way that we structure our budget right now, and it's worked out fine for us in the past, is that we budgeted up to a full amount of what that total expenditure is going to be every year. But then we have to do some work in the first part of the following year to basically delay any of our first expenditures of the year, just making sure that we do actually roll over an amount that is going to meet our fund balance requirement in that fund. And we've done a really great job of making sure that that happens. However, as every one of our conversations started was, we don't know where the economy is going. We don't know where prices are going to be. We don't know what the cost of expenses of equipment and vehicles are going to be. We don't know where fuel is going to go. We don't know where the prices of some of those materials that we need in every one of our funds is going to go. And so, in this budget, we felt like it was important to get started on including a reserve budget, a reserve fund in the general fund so that we could make sure that we're at least partway towards ensuring that every year we start with the beginning fund balance. And that's important for us and our peace of mind and the general fund in being able to continue those operations. But it's also important for our rating agency and any, anybody who's looking at our financials for future debt issuances because they- because they want to ensure that if something should happen, if your sales tax should fall flat, if you have a higher delinquency rate in property taxes than you expect, that you're going to be able to continue operations and also be able to continue making those payments back to them for that debt. So, those, that is also included in here in the general funds.
On this page here, the 864,000, you know, that's the total of all of those things in that column? Or what, what is the...
That is the left column, which is the request amount, minus the right column, which is the revised impact. So, say, for example, on building maintenance, we had asked you for window replacement of 28,000, and our revised impact on the 2023 budget is zero because what we're suggesting, that we pull that out of the general fund budget and lump it together with some other facility improvements and finance that so that we can get it done sooner and we're not hitting your general fund budget year over year for a couple of windows at a time. We're just trying to find a strategy for getting each one of those things done and being able to accomplish as much as we can with the dollars that we have available.
Well, I see because we're calling that finances city hall renovation. So, that 20,000 will be financed? So, it's not in the budget?
Yeah, so, that's another conversation when we get to, say, the debt service fund. So, we had an improvement of, I believe it's around 600,000 in order to shore up some building improvements that need to be made because, or that's allowing water to come into the law enforcement center. We have HVAC improvements in this building. We have the potential to renovate the commission chambers. We have windows that need replaced on the second floor because of the windows being exposed to the sun for so many years are leaking. We have things like that, that we could potentially roll into there, the seating for the auditorium and pay for that over time as opposed to having to have cash upfront. There's an opportunity to finance that under building improvements and then use that payment, have that payment be made out of the debt service fund because there's capacity there as opposed to hitting the general fund with a couple hundred thousand every year and building up to the point where we can afford to make some of those improvements. Does that make sense? And we intended to have, or do intend to have maybe a more detailed conversation about that later with you. But in this budget scenario, that's what we're proposing. Okay, to move on to the next fund? Okay. The auditorium fund, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Our director of the auditorium has done a really good job of putting together our revenue and expenditure estimates based on the new level of shows that are coming into, and events that are coming into that facility. It does raise our revenues, but it also raises some expenditures. However, in this budget, by keeping a relatively level mill rate in this fund, we're able to add some reserves to this, which might give us the opportunity to make some of those improvements. And we know that in that facility, as you continue to have bigger, better shows, bigger, better events, bring in people from the outside, that there's some upgrades that need to be made to the facility overall. So, having that available for some future improvements and also having it available because this is a property tax-supported fund, that if for some reason, those taxes weren't to come in or our motor vehicle estimates came in lower than we expected, that it would still be able to manage its expenses and revenues. The debt service fund is structured very similar. I did include more detail on this page because I wanted you to be able to see that in addition to property taxes, we also bring in transfers from each one of the funds that support each one of those funds' own debt for their own projects. So, for example, if we have proximity park debt, it is being paid for by the special sales tax from proximity park fund. And so, that is a transfer from special sales tax. There's transfers in there from each of the funds that have their own debt. So, our actual debt supported by property taxes is relatively low compared to the debt that we have that's supported by other revenue sources. So, you can see that in our revenues at the top. We do have, we do have to reserve the funds that were brought over from the land bank sale for the COGS payments, you know, to pay off that debt. And then, we are proposing that we keep a reserve in there for future debt. And that would be used in an effort to support the, say, financing of facility improvements. Do you have questions on debt service at all? Pretty straightforward. This is an updated sheet from the library. And Terry and I worked on this. If you'll recall, she, in our new, our new presentation manner for this here, she gave you a presentation on library expenses and expected revenue before we actually had motor vehicle estimates and property tax estimates or our valuation, just like we did for our other funds. And so, she did make some adjustments to the revenue side of things. And she did also go back and have a conversation with her board. And do you have anything that you'd like to talk about?
Okay. When assessed valuation came in, we realized that our mill levy was dropping quite a bit. And so, I asked Melanie if she was all right with me going back and talking with our board and considering opening extra hour, extended hours on Saturday and adding Sunday hours. So, in talking with the board, essentially, this is what they came up with. They voted not to extend those hours right now. And here are the reasons. They thought that, you know, we're always wanting to be good stewards of taxpayer money. They wanted to do some research to determine if there was demand and necessity for extended Saturday hours or added Sunday hours. If we budget for it, we definitely have to follow through with being able to provide those hours. Worried about workforce availability for added hours, worried about the feasibility to continue those extended hours in future, especially if the new library building does go through. We wanted to prioritize expenditure needs, importance, and impact. We also talked about employee wage increases to take competitive and to provide excellent service at the library. We're also concerned about the current state of the economy, high prices, inflation, recession. They also mentioned concern about expectation as we lower the mill levy below 9.0 mills, whether the, that would be expected in the future to continue to decrease. We, of course, again, want to continue to be good stewards of taxpayer funds. The economy affects assessed valuation. The economy affects whether or not taxpayers have the ability to pay their taxes, which affects whether or not we all get our money. So, we want to make sure that you understand that in the future, we will have increased overhead costs, a chance of increased employee wages, which we're always going to have that if we're going to give wage increases. Bonuses, well, not bonuses, wage increases for the year, which all of us hope that we can pay our employees wage increases annually. And of course, we want to be able to provide excellent services and programs. There's, there's no way to do that without an exceptional staff. And we feel Ottawa Library does, hasn't, have an exceptional staff, but the only way to keep them is to pay them. And so, that's a benefit for all of us. But do you have any questions about that? We're very proud to be able to reduce our mill and help out our taxpayers in that regard as well.
Do you know if you have? I mean, have people commented on like Sunday hours or Saturday hours?
So, in the year since we have closed, I have had two phone calls or messages left on the answering machine that people didn't know we weren't open those hours, which to me tells me they weren't trying to come in for those hours up until that point. Yeah, so, so the board did want to do some research and find out if there is any interest or, you know, any need to extend those hours or open on Sunday.
Tell me about that research that you found.
So, we haven't exactly solidified what that will be, whether it will be a survey of people who normally use a library or try to probably post something online as well. The last time when we made the decision to close those hours, it was simply by the fact that we were open those hours. And so, we kept track of when people were in the library, when they were not in the library. And Saturday afternoons and Sundays, we weren't getting much traffic.
Okay, and I might mention that we did, we do always double-check all of our numbers against the calculation for that, to make sure that they do continue to qualify for the state grant. And under this scenario, that is still the case. Do you want to talk about any of those funds further before we move on to the additional information we'd like to gather from you as a commission?
When you say any of those funds, are you talking anything on there?
Well, we could, we'd like to, we, one of the other things we do need some input on is the community service stuff. Should we just move on to that and then talk about all of it together at the end? Is that okay? Okay. So, community partner requests. You did have a couple of different days that we have presentations from a lot of our community partners and their requests for appropriations. And we do have an increase in the amount of dollars that, for 2023 over what we currently funded for 2022. Part of that does include some increases for a few of our partners and then also a new request from the blessing box. And in order for us to put together a full picture for you, which we'd like to present at the next Monday's meeting, we'd really like to get your feedback on how you'd like to fund these community partners so that we can give you a full, actual proposed budget for that community service fund.
My feeling, I think we've discussed at length, you know, over the years, the other community partners that we had. I think we're, we've heard a few times from the blessing box that they kind of would like, I guess, some sort of idea of what we think we might do so that they have an idea of how they could possibly move forward. And I've been, I've been thinking about this one. And maybe you have some ideas of, maybe instead of taxpayer money, different avenues that we could pull from to possibly fund. I have a suggestion. We've, you know, if you look at some of the other partners, ELC, Ottawa Fireworks, some of those comparable numbers were anywhere from 5,000 to 1,000. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable at this point, you know, being the initial donation to the blessing box of that amount. I think I'd be comfortable in about half of that, 2,500, giving them the ability to possibly raise the next half. Next year, come to us and say, "Look what we've done." Maybe have another discussion with us to budget more to show that it's necessary and that they were able to fund some of it too. And if we could possibly fund that from somewhere else, it doesn't necessarily have to come from taxes. Could go from ARPA or something. So, that's how, that's how I feel about the blessing box. I certainly think it's a necessity. I certainly am in favor of funding it. I just would like to see some more concrete evidence of where that money might go and how to choose before I'm able to go full, full, full into this one.
I can see your point. I think over the years, we, like Elizabeth Lake, we started quite a bit, so, over the last, the 4,000 even two years ago, it seemed like we started out with 10,000. So, we've got to start a amount, smaller amounts. So, maybe that 2,500 would be a good number to start with blessing box. And I suppose that the years that some of the are charging that money and then go buy food and then stock the boxes, was that kind of the idea, how that would work?
Yeah, I think they were hoping to use that money for rent for an actual space where they could keep food, maybe a place somebody could come in and cool off if it, if the, you know, weather's like it is today or if it's very cold outside. And then also where they can store food because they're lacking space. I might just, I just, based off of what you were saying, that if you were to fund a portion of this from the ARPA funds, that would give them an opportunity to have some time to go out and secure a place to move ahead with their, with their ideas on securing an actual place, renting a place, and having that upgrade out of there. Whereas, because we have that, more of like a two-year time period as opposed to a structured one-year budget, whereas if it's not used, then it would basically go away and they'd have to ask for that same amount again. But that would be, that would be one opportunity is to, to hold it aside or earmark it in there. And then, whether it comes to fruition, great, we can issue it. But otherwise, it would stay in there. That would be an opportunity.
Is there anything that they're going to need to, you know, I know there's, there's a reporting for the ARPA funds. Is there reporting that's necessary that they would have to fulfill in order to receive those funds?
So, for us, there will be reporting. But remember, we did that as, we kind of moved it out from underneath of that structured application, need for an application process now. So, now, we wouldn't necessarily have to do that. It would be up to you to make those decisions as to how that gets allocated.
I just, I don't know how, how set up they are at this point. I don't want to suggest something and then come, come to find out they can't utilize those funds anyway, so.
It would give you a lot more of a broad opportunity to help, help fund that.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, what I would envision we do, if you allocated it out of ARPAs, we would draft an agreement, much like what we have with our community development partners with the same requirements.
Do you know off the top of your head what the, like, an encumbered amount in ARPA funds that we had, the amount that we haven't necessarily put towards anything specific?
So, after our first conversation, I think there was about 400,000 in there. And we have some other things, some pluses and minuses to bring back and share with you again. But I would say there's still probably going to be a larger amount in there.
I think, like, for me, I would be comfortable. I know that, you know, they've, they've kind of been established for a while in giving food to people and even helping out with resources. Me personally, I would be fine earmarking the 5,000, the full amount, out, if we were to do it out of ARPA funds versus a lesser amount.
So, if you are all comfortable with us removing it from this process, from this appropriation process, we can bring it back to add another conversation to re-discuss about the ARPA overall, use of those funds. And then, you can make a determination then at that funding level and how you'd like to structure that. Would that be okay? Okay?
Now, there are still the other requested increases in the community partner fund that you need to give us feedback on. Hurry Pause has requested an increase. City Band has requested an increase. I think we, I think we put in the fireworks increase. And ELC has requested an increase.
For me, it's easy to, to increase city me. I mean, they have not really received an increase in, a huge increase at all, really, in the time that I've been here. So, that's an easy one for me. I feel like I can just check that off and say, "Yeah, that's fine with me." I don't think anything was egregious that they were asking for. I don't think it was excessive. So, I'm fine moving forward with that. Fireworks. I think every good American likes the fireworks. And we should probably go ahead and fund that.
For sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything there, community partners alike, that I'm, I'm concerned about. I think they're all fair requests.
I believe that in this fund, and I'll put it back together and make sure that I give you an update on that at our next meeting. But I believe that by, even with the requested amounts for 2023, that it won't cause us to have to increase our contributions from each of the contributing funds just because it does have a fund in there already. So, it would, for this year, would it necessarily be an increase to each of those funds' transfers? If, if you should choose to fund it at this level, or at least the way that we're discussing it now.
Yeah, I mean, combined, it's a total of about $5,000 in duties.
So, we're all leaving that alone.
We never want to make assumptions.
Yes, absolutely. Well, and I'd much rather have the conversation now than having to back. Well, and I'd, I'd much rather have the conversation now than having to backtrack later. All right. So the next actual decision point is to review, I guess. Today we're talking about the mill rates and the revenue neutral rate and where you'd like to land potentially on the published notice and/or the intent to exceed that. We want to continue that discussion with you, but expand that conversation on the 18th to include everything else that we have included in the budget so you can get a full picture. The reality of that though, is that the only real decision you have to make on the 20th is do you intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate? And that would be by accomplishing that form and voting on that at your regular meeting. That will actually start the process of getting that published. So once we start moving down that road, it's published by the county, by, by notice, by mail. Then we can, we will also publish that public hearing date and we can then have even a further discussion on budget if you'd like. If there's other items that you're just not sure you want to settle on for any of the other funds that are not mill levy supported. And then we have the public hearing and a potential approval or adoption of that operating budget. The public hearing, we have two opportunities in here and that would be the 10:00 AM meeting, which is the second meeting in August, or the first meeting in September, which is 7:00 PM. Traditionally, I believe we've always held it at a 7:00 PM meeting because we'd like the opportunity to be there for the public to ease, attend more easily. What we were thinking was, we would prefer that we actually move ahead with the public hearing in August if we could, but that would actually require you moving the time from that second meeting in August from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM in order to accomplish that. We didn't know if that was something that you, that you all would want to consider.
One of the reasons we're recommending that, holding that public hearing in, in August instead of in September, is it gives us a little bit more time if something happens after the public hearing, that we can come back to you and maybe make an adjustment. But what I would suggest is you just flip those meetings in August.
And then be separate days, the regular budget and the revenue neutral, they can be combined into one?
They'll be in one meeting. We'll have the public hearing on both, you do have to have two public hearings, one for the revenue neutral rate to, and if you're going to exceed it at all, and the other for your actual budget. The, the community has an opportunity to come in and ask questions, to get suggestions, to give you any comments they might have on the process and/or where we're landing with that. And then you have the opportunity to adopt. Now, you don't have to adopt on the same night that we have the public hearing. You could move that to a future date if you wanted to give it further contemplation. Or you can go ahead and adopt on the same night after the public hearing. I think that probably depends on what comments you receive from that public hearing. And so we would probably go ahead and schedule that adoption on the same night, but then give you the opportunity to move that if you needed to.
And so you were suggesting as an idea to switch the evening morning dates, August 3rd to August 17th?
You could either do that or just have both of them in in the evening, whatever works best for you as a commission. And if, and if that second meeting date in August doesn't work to have it in the evening, we can certainly have it in the first meeting in September. We're still well within our timeframe. I think we were just hoping to move it along because we've had an extended conversation on budget. It gives you an opportunity to just continue with that process.
I know it can be taxing to have staff attend late night meetings, but I'm actually not going to be in town on the 3rd until, and I, I was planning on being here in the evening, so I can't be here for a 10:00 AM meeting.
And I was going to miss the morning meeting on the 17th. I was maybe available through Zoom. So if we did evening on both meetings, that would be quite helpful. That works.
We will be wherever you want us to be.
I'm open to anything. I mean, I certainly like the early and late meetings like we've always included, just to kind of catch all sorts of, of the public, those that can't make it to the late and vice versa. But I'm, I'm open to, to anything at this point. Over like a good?
Two evenings in August.
There you go.
Two evenings in August. All right. So we will hold that at the second meeting in August. And we do have to include that on our intent form, so that'll be in your packet for next Monday's meeting for you to review that. That would be what would be moving on to your agenda for the 20th. The rest of our conversation is just around the discussion and a discussion of the mill rate and what we have proposed for you here. And we'd really like to know if you would like to publish at this level and/or complete, or if you intend to exceed that revenue neutral rate. The revenue neutral rate is the 41.536 and what we're recommending is at the 45 level. Now, we remember that if we adopt that intent to exceed, you can do anything over the 41. It doesn't have to be what we proposed here. It could be anything different. Just no more than that published rate of 45.446 if you should choose to, to publish it at that rate. So I think this would be the time that we would hope you would give us a little bit of direction there so we can bring back to you a completed form for your consideration next Monday.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of publishing the 45.446 and having a discussion about that maybe being lower later on. In order to be revenue neutral, we have to cut another half a million out. And I just don't foresee that happening. So we, I mean, you've already cut over a million out of the budget as the city manager's already mentioned. So yeah, that's, that's how I'm, I'm in favor of.
We need to be prepared to do so.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. So what we'll bring back to you then next time is that, plus an expanded version of the budget for you to look through. Now, we do have for, we have a lot of funds and that will be a rather large budget packet. I don't, it is not necessary that we review all of it for the 20th. We could come back and review that later. I know this is a kind of a relatively short timeline with only a week in between for you to really put consideration into the rest of the, the funds. Instead, if you would like, in this next packet, a summary of every fund included in there, but your focus could be on maybe giving us a little more direction on what you, where you'd like to land after we publish that, that mill rate so that we can then be doing some work on our end over the next month or so and bring back to you the detail when we come back before the public hearing. That would definitely be helpful to us. Would that be okay for our next packet? We'll give you the summary of all the funds and then we'll include basically the same information, include the intent to exceed at what we've discussed now and then proceed from there.
Would that be the time to discuss financing? What will finance, what we won't, that we pay cash or what? I mean, with that.
Yeah, you know, I can, I will include that summary in there of the things that we, that could be financed and what we've proposed in here as being financed so that you can see what that looks like. Sure.
I agree. I think with rates, I know they're going higher and, and this would be a good time for going to borrow money, I think, to get it done this year and then next year, but the following year, I just think it's going to be, it's going to be priced too high. So this is.
Okay, certainly. Anything else you'd like to see next Monday? No? Okay. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
Well, not to that.
Okay. All right. Melanie did a great job.
I made a promise to her.
Did he keep it?
Yeah, he did.
All right. That moves us on to comments by our city manager.
Just a couple of things. We got the, as I told you last week, we got the Cedar Street bid back. You will see it next Monday. In fact, I'm reviewing a recommendation memorandum from Casey right now. So you will have that. It did come in under the bid, so that's, that's good. We've got two projects like that. On our base grant, we, remember we have three parts. We have the water tower part, we have the lift station part, and we have the Kansas Gas Service. I am pretty confident after a phone call today with Blaine and Melanie and Dan, that we are on the right track. We're looking at some of the final paperwork that our consultant needs in order for the state to review, to make sure we're in compliance with, with those projects before we're published. And we also, I believe the city attorney has also submitted today an agreement with an addendum to Kansas Gas Service about how that project will work also. That's a highly unusual project. So what I'm hoping is very shortly we'll have that agreement before you so we can get the city commissioner's side off on that. And then we can be talking about having Kansas Gas Service provide service out there in proximity park. And that is it.
Thank you. Please, sorry, comments by city commissioners. Commissioner Graves?
I don't think I have a comment.
Commissioner Kayla?
Not at this time.
Claire Perkins-Gidmore? I have no comments either, except for I'm going to make a motion that we recess into executive session for the purpose of engaging in confidential communications with the governing body's attorney, specifically to receive legal advice. And then we reconvene in this room at, I'm going to give a couple minutes to leave, 5:03.
Your reconvene's time is again?
10 minutes.
Okay.
Sorry. Matter of 10 minutes, so if we give you a couple of minutes, we're going to reconvene here. Yeah, 10 minutes after that. City attorney, city manager and finance director will be present. No action will be taken.
Second.
Home favorite side?
Mine.
All right.